How do you fill the gap between the three hundred that they own and what they want for it?
Right.
Can you find a second? Yeah, you can assume.
I mean, if you have, if you have the cap. Yeah, if you can fill in the gap on your.
All right, we're ready to begin.
Okay, it's uh six o'clock and I'm gonna call this Lacey City uh. Work session to order, it's a Thursday, June eighth. We have an agenda, but um I've asked if we can just do a quick uh. Flip of the agenda and have the one two striker brigade combat team go first and then the terrain uh regional library go second.
Move to approve the amended agenda.
Second.
We moved in second in, is there any discussion? Um for the public, we just wanna know that Congressman Stedman is uh attending virtually tonight. And with that, um all those in favor signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed? Then that motion unanimously carries, we've approved the amended agenda and the first up. On our amended agenda is the one two striker brigade combat team update, go ahead and come on up.
Good evening, and thanks for uh.
If you had to sit down here, we have a camera right there so the public can see as well.
Great.
Do I need to look a certain way?
No, no. There's, there you go.
Thanks for allowing us to come in and talk for a good night about uh what we're doing with the Ghost Brigade and just frankly talk about our partnership that we greatly appreciate. Most recently, we had a uh Memorial Day ceremony and several council members came and we're grateful for that. Uh it just means a lot. I know you guys do a lot with the Gold Star families down here. Uh and just to have your presence there, I think it just, it's a, it's a meaningful thing for our families to see. Um and uh we're grateful for having you all there. Um I'm Colonel Quentin Coleman, I'm the Brigade Commander and the Ghost Brigade, the one two striker brigade. Um and um we're based out of JBLM uh and we appreciate your role as partnership with our soldiers and with our families. Been community partners with the city uh for over twenty years and we've got about three thousand families that live down here. Uh with about six thousand veterans that live in the area. Uh and uh. It's where we go to work, it's where we take, people take their kids to schools, uh we appreciate the opportunity to partner with some of the schools down here in this area. Um and throughout the county, uh and I know we just, we enjoy the local area here. I was just in the last couple of weeks, took my kids over to Billy Frank uh National Wildlife. Which is amazing, um but you know with teenage kids you only get so far, so you gotta promise there's something else. Birds are cool, but but they're like dad. What's next? And what was next was pizza in Lacey. Um and that sealed the deal. Um so needless to say, uh we enjoy recreating in the city of Lacey and the surrounding uh areas as well. And I, my family and I certainly benefit from that. Um. I think uh, you know, most recently, we've, we've done some um work with uh with the community. With uh coming to, to the Gold Star event that you all recently did with the foundation, uh I, I can't thank you enough for that. I, I personally, as a, as a battalion commander in Afghanistan, the eighty second air war and I lost two soldiers. Uh and those Gold Star family relationships are really important. I still call them every year on the second of August. And uh it's a relationship that if done properly, I think is, is a lifelong relationship. And when they settle down in communities, um I just appreciate you guys put your arms around, you honor them. It's, no one quite knows sacrifices that are involved in defending our freedoms, um like Gold Star families and um. It's a forever thing, so thanks for putting your arms around them, making them know that they're appreciated. Um. And I think what you guys did was, was a wonderful, beautiful way to do it. Um and uh we were honored to be a part of that. I'm sorry I wasn't able to be here, uh but I think Tom Engstodder, Battalion Commander, came down and gave some work and uh. Probably did a better job than I would.
He did really good.
He's so, so interesting. He wrote uh speeches for um General Milley. As chairman, he was the chairman of the Joint Chiefs, the staff uh speechwriter, so you know, every now and then you're like, okay, I think you'll do as a fill-in. Although I used to write some speeches too, but um. The flag's over Lacey, we, we really appreciate being able to be a part of that and uh thank you guys for doing that. Um I was. I do lots of things in Lacey, I dropped my broken lawnmower off at a John Deere dealership a couple of weeks ago and, and but it happened to be right after the flags of Lacey. Flags of Lacey and it was just, I, I appreciate it as a veteran driving down the streets, seeing all the flags, so.
Maybe not, that state of Lacey was considered the most patriotic city in the state of Washington and. Um that was based off of a lot, lot of different data, but uh all of the data is, is that um our, our flag's going out um. On every major holiday, so it's something that's been a long time uh partnership with the service club in, in town as well, so we really. Appreciate them um and for all the work that they do and we, we get it uh all the time, how, how our constituents really appreciate that as well. You know, we are, we are a military community, we recognize we're a military community and um this is our, our way of saying, you know, um you're wel-, you know, welcome and, and thank you for what you do.
Yeah, we, we feel that, we sense it. Um and then the uh North Thurston Public School, Big Brother, Big Sister Program. Um so I've encouraged all of our battalions to, to time with the community in one way or another. Uh whether it's, you know, doing volunteer work in schools, whether it's cleaning up a local trail, uh you know, you, you'll see us knocking on a couple of different doors saying, hey, can we? Can we get out there and do some stuff? I just think it's, it's, I want people, I think they hopefully and apparently understand that as part of the military, you're doing something bigger than yourself. But I think giving back to the community is important too. Uh so just getting out there and. Being a servant leader and, and uh doing something bigger than yourself is uh helps us just have a transcendent cause of people. Uh we have one every day in the military, I'm gonna think more than you guys is important too. Um and then uh as I said, thanks for coming out uh to the Memorial Day Ceremony. There were several Gold Star family members there, I got a chance to talk to one of them afterwards and uh. Again, I think if they felt like they weren't being supported by the community and by the service, you, you wouldn't see them, so thanks for what you're doing on that. Yeah, one of, one of the thing I, I think God had mentioned is, I just, I think there's a kindred spirit in here because you guys don't have to do this either. There's, there's a selfless public service in the room and know that I appreciate that. Every single one of us kinda puts our money where our mouth is, so to speak, you know, uh you guys are doing public service for the city of Lacey. I believe I'm doing public service for the nation, is all the ghost soldiers are, so I suspect there's kindred spirit in this here, just doing something bigger than yourself, so. Uh just wanna say I appreciate that and recognize that and respect it. And then uh, you know, finally, I think certainly we see it in wartime when we flow out the door and, and service members are uh. You know, forward fighting. But, but thankfully, and I genuinely mean that, thankfully, we're not doing that right now. Um but. In wartime, we certainly know what you all do for our families that are back here truly alone, but even in, in the, in the peacetime. Like we're in now, it's not a busy time and it's not a time where we have service members that aren't forward doing stuff. Um our sister brigade, the Lancer Brigade, who undoubtedly has uh soldiers that live in Lacey community too, and they're forwarding Korea right now. And so um thousands of them. And so you guys are undoubtedly doing that for Lancer soldiers right now. Um and uh, you know, will find ourselves. Um we have found ourselves forward many times, since I've been in command, uh and I think maybe this is just an interesting aside. Maybe you guys know uh what the Ghost Brigade does, or I think this is just an appropriate time to give you a little bit of an update. And you, as you may or may not know, it's the oldest, it's the first striker brigade in the army. And uh deployed four times in the Global War on Terror. Since twenty twelve has, has been back at JBLM, but not under. Um so as we have new career competitors, uh I think folks like China. Uh that perhaps would wish to do things uh in the Indo-Pacific area of responsibility, that's, that's our area responsibility. If something goes bump in the night in that area, we're gone. And so uh we spend a lot of time thinking about it, making sure we're ready for it, but, but even recently, I'll just highlight a couple of things. Going forward and, and hopefully deterring in that region, so since I've been in command here next month. And um since we, since I've been in command, the month before I was in command, the brigade was in Singapore. Um since I've been in command, we've had soldiers in Indonesia. Um we've been in Thailand, I've personally been to Thailand three times in the job. We took about a thousand soldiers forward to Thailand in February and March. Um we uh recently had soldiers in Japan, will be in Japan again later this fall. And so the Ghost Brigade is, is forward in the region and, and, and hopefully again deterring aggression from our uh potential adversaries. But I also say that, just to say that when they're forward, their families are back here and so I appreciate what you guys do to, to take care of and to provide. World-class facilities, whether it's roads and infrastructure, whether it's shopping. You are a part to support your tax base in my family. Still a lot of money in Costco. Home Depot, uh getting ready for, doing yard work, but um. But I tell you, there's lots of communities where those kinds of services are not available and uh like I said, I just took my kids to a world-class. You know, uh nature reserves just a couple of weeks ago and I told the kids, I mean, I don't know if you guys know how lucky you are to have. The, the type of things like that are just in your backyard here, so know that we, we appreciate and we benefit from it. You know, and uh Andy and Malcolm on a personal note, I, I, I wish and hope that over time I'll get to know each and every one of you, but. I had a chance to have them over to the house and, and get some dinner uh around the holiday season and bump into them at holiday parties and whatnot on those. But uh it's been good just getting to know you guys personally, um and enjoying your company and look forward to getting to know the rest of you all better. But that's, that kinda answers if there's any questions, if you want to answer any questions, but um again, just thank you for the continued partnership.
Yeah, yeah, anything uh feedback from, from the troops uh that Lacey could improve upon or. Uh things that would be helpful uh for soldiers that live here in Lacey that we could consider as a council and. And uh help, help them benefit from.
Um I think not specifically, but if I were to speak in some sort of a generality, um. You know, I think we all have a shared interest in, in uh safe areas to live. Um we recently had a soldier's spouse uh had an incident, I don't, it was not in Lacey, but I'll just use it as a general talking point. But it was a, especially a fairly violent thing happened to a female spouse and um, you know. So the safeties of our surrounding communities impact the safety of our soldiers and general quality of life and welfare, so you know. Having. Great public servants that are willing to put their life on the line and. Perhaps policemen and women and things of that nature, we know that we appreciate it and know that there's pockets. That are in the surrounding areas of JBLM that occasionally um. You know, we, we run into an issue where some, something wasn't safe and something does happen to one of the soldiers. Um and so we greatly appreciate the time and effort you guys and making sure your communities are safe. I think that's a, there's certainly a, you know, mutually beneficial there.
Absolutely, absolutely. Councilor Stebbin, do you have something?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Uh uh first of all, uh Colonel, just my apologies for not being there. I would turn my video on, but no one needs to see me in the condition I'm in. A big fit and I, I chalked it up to maybe my war airborne days in the Marine Corps, but um. Hey, uh the only thing more painful than a bad back is not being in, being there to support you guys um. And the men and wer- women that serve with you, so you got the good captain with you as well. Um him and I probably have as, as strong as, have been building a strong friendship like you and the mayor, deputy mayor, but. Anyways, I wish I could be there for you guys, um but just know every one of your members. Um have, have my full support and appreciation and respect, thank you, sir.
Thank you, simplify. Well, um you know, the, the, I think the one thing that. We're extremely proud of here in, in Lacey is that we're a military community, um it ends. Um we love it, right? I mean, it's a part of who we are, it's a part of our identity. And it's something that um we have wholeheartedly embraced, you know, I told you the story that, you know, uh part, half of my family is here because of. Of, of Fort Lewis and so if it wasn't for that, you know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be here today either. Um and you know, I'm really proud of the Lacey Veteran Services Hub too, I mean, it's. It's the model for providing services to veterans and their families and there is so much good work that's going out of Lacey Veteran Services Hub, so. You know, any of your soldiers that are, 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 or spouses who are looking for help, need help. Um please refer them to the Lacey Veteran Services Hub and I know I promised you guys a um a tour and I still need to get that to you. Um and I'd be happy to do that, but it's just um, it's an, it's an amazing facility, that's, they're doing great work and then um. You know, and I think it just goes to show you how much Lacey appreciates. And, and wants to be a good partner and, and provide services and, and do everything we can to support our soldiers and, and their families and so. It's a, it's a great relationship and we, you know, the, the soldiers from Fort Lewis has really helped make our community in so many different ways. Um when we were building Ranger Vista, our lot, our major park that. Construction that happened, we had soldiers out there, you know, moving dirt and e- everything else, you know, and I know there's other opportunities right now. We're, we're looking at uh doing, building a bunch of trails and other stuff at, at big um, great clear park and. I know there'll be ongoing opportunities for, for us to work together and um and do some volunteerism and make this community. Uh you know, even better place for, for our families, which is, you know, something that we are, are very proud of, of making sure that we have free events. Um and because we understand that, you know, sometimes soldiers, uh it can be tight being a soldier, I know that for sure. And so we really proud, you know, are proud of the fact that we have so many free events here in Lacey for families. Um Lacey Fund Fair, you know, our third of July fireworks, which is coming up here pretty soon. Um it's amazing event, um I know that you guys have a pretty good event going on uh at, at Fort Lewis after that. Um a little bit later in the month, but our, our third of July fireworks, you know, please let your soldiers know if they, you know, especially the. That live in here in Lacey.
So one more you can put on your radar, sir, is uh June fourteenth Flag Day. Every year, the uh Thurston County Realtors put on a celebration of Flag Days at the Lacey Civic Plaza. Right where the Gold Star Families Memorial Monument is now located and that's gonna be at four o'clock on June fourteenth. And we have uh Representative Andrew Marcus will be our keynote speaker. And if you'd like to come in and check it out, then you're, you're more than welcome.
June eight event is coming up next Saturday, uh eleven four at uh the Rack or Regional Athletic Complex.
Yeah, that's another big one. Everyone's invited, that, that's a barbecue and you name it, it's gonna be a great, a great day, great celebration.
Not burgers and dogs, the good stuff.
Welcome, I'm from Kansas City. Bit of a barbecue. We're all in Kansas City one November. You guys do it really good.
Yeah, is there anything else?
Uh yeah, so the other day when I got to work, there was soldiers cleaning up around the building. Yeah, uh so and I asked them, I said, how'd you guys end up here? And they said, well, you know, we uh, we, we get. Sent out to help. Sent out to help in the community, uh I didn't identify myself, I felt like I should have, but I was just grateful that they were there. Uh and so I just said, thank you, I should've said, thank you from the city. Uh and on a personal note, uh I met my wife because she got stationed at JBLM. Yeah, so that was really cool and so uh thank you guys for being in this community, we really appreciate it, I know I do.
Okay.
Yeah, guys, thanks for making a little time for us, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
I know, oh yeah, boat ride too.
Thanks, have a good night.
Good night, Jonah.
Timberland Library. Come on up.
I'm coming with everything because I have a cough. So I have Kleenex, tea, Ozon.
Gonna scoot back a little bit.
Yes, a little bit, I'm not contagious, it's not COVID. Well, thank you so much for. Thank you.
Just enough to be on the screen.
So thank you for this opportunity, this is a wonderful opportunity to uh, I really, we really appreciate it. To be able to have deeper conversations about what Timberland Regional Library is doing with Lacey and, and other places around our region. Um I do wanna start by saying, for me, it's been like Lacey Month the last month because I have. Uh given presentations at Panorama City, at Jubilee and at seven AM with the Gateway Glutarians. And also wanted to let you know that the Lacey Veterans Hub, we, we have worked with them. In terms of the Veterans Connection Cafe in Randall, in East Lewis County, they have been enormous help. Um and so it's, it, they're doing beyond the city of Lacey. And I'm a PAC Mountain Board member, I've been so since twenty sixteen and I lead the One Stock Committee, which oversees workforce. And what I learned as a PAC Mountain Board member several years ago is that our region, our five county region, which is. Thurston, Lewis, Mason, Pacific, Ray's Harbor Counties have the largest percentage of veterans compared to the rest of this state and this nation. So um so it's just, it's a wonderful, it's all the services that we get back and forth are just incredible. So I'm here tonight to share some of the highlights from twenty twenty-two, however, there's so many things going on in twenty twenty-three. In the past two weeks that I'm very excited to share uh with you tonight. And so I, I do wanna, um everything we do is around a framework called the Strategic Direction. And it's a five-year plan and it focuses, it's based on community input and the number one theme we heard in the fall of twenty nineteen. Was, we love living in this region, we want, we are uh raising our children here and we want our children to stay here. And have family wage jobs. So that has been my personal mission um since the fall of twenty nineteen. And our board adopted uh um the Strategic Direction for twenty twenty to twenty twenty-five. Focusing on underserved areas. Equity, diversity, inclusion and birth to five. So everything I'm gonna talk to you about tonight is, is centered on those three points. Um the annual report that I brought with me, because we are mandated by law to provide one. Um is available at trl dot org and I brought hard copies for you as well tonight. So we are what's considered an inter-county rural library district formed by the people for the people in the unincorporated areas in nineteen sixty-eight. Fast forward to today, we are twenty-nine libraries uh and a projected revenue this year of twenty-six point four million dollars. Ninety-one percent is property tax and we are doing your taxing district, one of two hundred and twenty-six across five counties. Did the count, I did the math recently and um. And we uh can levy up to fifty cents per one thousand dollar assessed value of your property and we are currently at twenty-three cents out of fifty cents. Just like other uh government agencies, I mean, that they're, that you're low. Um so I wanna start with some of the highlights from twenty twenty-two. Of course, I need to start off with Hawks Prairie. Because we opened up, and I'm so sorry I wasn't there on that day, I was on vacation, but we opened up the twenty-ninth library, Hawks Prairie Timberland Library. Which is a lucky, what we call in internally, a lucky day demonstration library. It's your lucky day, you don't have to place a hold, you're not three hundred, the, the three hundred and tenth person in line for an item. Um so it's your lucky day because you walk in and it's best sellers for, for all ages. Um and then it's a demonstration because we're demonstrating to you, to us, to our board, to the public, that it's a necessary location. So I do have the statistics uh for Hawks Prairie and so, and did it open in twenty twenty-one?
Oh, twenty twenty-two.
I know, but for some reason I have sixty-four physical checkouts in twenty twenty-one.
Um that was because we had a, uh we had the baby boomer bikes cafe.
Right, okay. Okay, so that's sixty-four in twenty twenty-one, physical checkouts then in twenty twenty-two was thirty thousand four hundred and twenty-seven. And then uh, and then the person who gives me these numbers, she goes, increase too high to calculate, because she gives me the percentages, right? Um overdrive checkout, so overdrive is downloadable eBooks, e-audiobooks and e-magazines. E-magazines have been integrated into that app and to that platform and there's access to four thousand three hundred magazines. On a variety of topics from all over the world in multiple languages. So they opened up that, that vault for us because pre-pandemic we had two hundred, two hundred and fifty titles of e-magazines. But during the pandemic, they opened up that thing for us uh for free during the pandemic. The only thing I believe that you cannot find there is People Magazine because they want it to be completely separate. So Hawks Prairie is, so Hawks Prairie in terms of the overdrive checkouts, three thousand four hundred and fifty-eight. In twenty twenty-two, there's five hundred and five active patrons in twenty twenty-two in the Hawks Prairie region. So when we opened up Hawks Prairie, it's a three-year lease. And we're trying to figure out, you know, what we're gonna do, we're already a year into it, right? And you must have read in the paper that recently we've received a very large uh donation from the estate of Rodney Mopin. In the uh, in the amount of nine hundred and twenty thousand dollars and his estate has not closed yet, so we're expecting more money. So Rodney lived in Rainier and his mother frequented the Lacey Timberland Library and loved it so much and when she died, he changed. His will to have everything specifically donated to the Lacey Timberland Library. So the money, I have never held a check that large in my life, I was very nervous bringing it back to our headquarters. Um and it goes straight into our, you know, our bank is the treasurer, the Thurston County Treasurer, like I'm sure yours is. And um it's sitting in our gift fund, specifically earmarked for Lacey. And we are waiting until, you know, because I know Holly's involved in the North Thurston Public Schools Family and Early Childhood Center. And so we're waiting to see what's gonna happen with that. Um so we also increased uh new library open hours at the twenty-nine libraries last year by a twelve percent increase. So for Lacey, that's ten to six, Monday through Saturday and Hawks Prairie is Tuesday through Sunday, ten to six, did I get that right?
Yes, and starting July first, it's going to be seven days a week, ten to six at Hawks Prairie.
It's good.
And we're doing that with existing staff.
Yes.
And the reason why we can do that is because we have automated a lot of the internal work that we do. That for one-time costs, like self-checkout machines that you see at the library. Or you see that automated materials handling equipment there, that's a small version that costs about seventy-five or eighty thousand. There's one here, there's one at the Olympia Library downtown, but then we have the mega one at headquarters. And it's like, you know, ten, twelve, twenty times the size of that one, that one costs six or seven hundred thousand dollars. Because all the materials coming in from all the twenty-nine libraries and it takes one person to do the work previously of like four to six people. So um, so that's how we're able to, you know, we've changed the internal, the way we do our internal work. We introduced last year something called Grow a Reader, it's an early literacy activity for ages birth to six and their caregivers. And this is a wonderful physical uh momento for the guardian or the parent to track the child's favorite book, so we have that in. Uh in English and in Spanish and the artwork is from Nikki McClure, an artist from Olympia. So we have Grow a Reader and since we're talking about birth to six, birth to five right now, we are advocating very strongly for a program that is not ours. However, everybody I'm sure has heard about it, which is the Dolly Parton Imagination Library. So Dolly Parton, it's, it's the Childcare Action Council that oversees it and um we are moving the needle on that with them. Because they're coming to our storytimes where we have eighty kids and they're helping us sign up the kids because our staff are giving the storytimes and there are not enough. Um people to sign up these kids. Late last year, we introduced iPads for inline reading only at all the libraries. Last year, we expanded our library of things, so not only did we spend four million dollars this year and last year, each year. On content, which is the books, the magazines and online content, we also have a library of things that we're not spending our money on. People are donating it, uh and so we have, uh last year we included new stargazing kits to check out. Kitchen tools to check out, plankton kits to check out with microscopes and that's thanks to the Pacific Shellfish Institute. We have early math backpacks for ages three through eight with a grant from the Capital Stem Alliance. And we added additional fishing kits and we added uh checkout Washington kits. And thanks to the State Park Foundation, they gave us all, all these rediscover passes to go into these, into these kits. There's a lot more, we have birding backpacks too, thanks to the Black Hills Audubon Society who has raised tens of thousands of dollars. Because each of those birding backpacks are about seven hundred dollars a piece because they're quality binoculars for the parent and the child. So you can take, if people check them out and go to the Nisqually, you know, uh Refuge and so uh, so they're very popular. This library of things is continuously expanding and incredibly popular. Um expanded access hours, I'm not sure if I've spoken to the council here in the past about expanded access hours, so. Regardless of the surveys that we've put out in the last uh since twenty thirteen. No matter what the topic is, people want early morning, early evening, Sunday hours, access to physical libraries and we cannot afford that. So we did a pilot in twenty nineteen with the city of McCleary who allowed to do it there. Where we went from twenty-seven staff hours a week to ninety-one hours a week, seven AM to eight PM daily. Pe- people loved it, they used it for workforce development, applying for jobs, running their real estate business, a teacher picking up her books. People reading a newspaper on the Sunday morning. Fast forward to now, our board approved a million dollars, a little bit over a million dollars to do that at other libraries. So you can get a key card and key card yourself into these libraries from seven AM to eight PM daily. Including Sundays, including holidays. The, um and the only library that we will do like this in Thurston County is Tenino because it's small enough to do it. There's cameras, of course, the technology is expensive, costs about eighty thousand dollars to do a, a building that size. So we're going live with Tenino next Thursday, June fifteenth. And your key card is good at any of the following libraries that I'm about to mention. So Tenino, uh Salcom will be up and running later this year, Packwood, uh Ocean Park. Ilwako next Saturday, Nacelle, McCleary, Elma, Hootsport.
Wow.
So you can tell they're all the small rural libraries. Did you have a question? I'm sorry?
I, I thought I counted ten.
I don't know, is it ten? I don't know, I have to, I have to do it all over again. Um but uh and this is the first wave because we would like to see.
But isn't, isn't Hawks Prairie small enough to do that too?
We don't own that building, sir.
Yeah, we don't own it, we don't wanna put that kind of money in a building that we don't own.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
That's true, so because you need all the cameras to do that.
The can, the door, the door thing and, yeah. Um, and our board, uh, two months ago voted to decrease the age to, uh, and this is an opt-in system. You have to be a library cardholder in good standing to be able to get this service. And they decreased the age from eighteen down to fourteen. So it's fourteen years of age and up and it's opted in. So if a person doesn't feel safe, they don't have to do it.
Yeah.
Um, but it's there for people who really want it and the people who use it are our super, super, super users and they love it.
Sure.
They just love it. So that's expanded access hours. We also just refreshed the McLeary Timberland Library. We issued over five thousand four hundred and twenty three cards for library card signup month last September. Currently, June first to July fifteenth, right now, we have a library card contest for people ages eighteen years of age and younger. There will be three winners and they, we will make those into library cards for the library card signup month this September. Uh, and then we opened also on Sundays at West Olympia Timberland Library, Capitol Mall. It is number nine out of twenty nine libraries in terms of physical circulation. And we just doubled the size of that from twelve hundred to twenty five hundred square feet. Uh, and then the summer library program, over nine thousand six hundred and three people participated in six hundred and fifty two programs last year. That's going on right now. So when you were talking before about free programs from the city, the Lacy Timberland Library puts on a lot of free programs too, as you know. And, um, and so the summer library program is going on right now from June first to August thirty first for all ages. So I want to mention now the statistics for Lacy and that is, I mean, this building here. And this is, it's increased, the physical checkouts increased by thirty one percent from two thousand and twenty one to two thousand and twenty two. So in two thousand and twenty two, it went up to five hundred and seventeen thousand and four physical checkouts. Please remember, we're still not where we were in two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and nineteen, we were at six hundred and eighty nine thousand eight hundred and sixty three. All of our data around everything we keep in terms of data is on our website at T R L dot O R G under Open Data. And then overdrive checkout, the downloadable stuff, increased by eleven percent from two thousand and twenty one to two thousand and twenty two. And that, that has increased because in two thousand and nineteen, that was two hundred and twenty four thousand and last year was three hundred and fifty six thousand. And that's a trajectory that we're seeing across our region and across the nation. That since the pandemic and even before that, what's happening is less physical, more downloadable. Yeah. Um, okay, so, uh, let's see.
Cheryl, can I add something about circulation?
Sure.
Just because I know that Mayor Ryder will ask. Um, for January through March of two thousand and twenty three, that's this year, uh, Lacy is ranked number one in materials checked out and Hawks Prairie is ranked sixteen.
Wow. Yeah, she, she, she read my mind. I was actually guessing where, where is that really?
There you go, sir.
All right, thank you, thank you very much. Um, uh, just this week, we expanded our mail-out program. So we used to have a mail-out program, but it was very not as equitable as we wanted it to be. So now it's like, we just opened it up. And so this is for people who are, you know, homebound, beyond thirty miles, it's like, that was the thirty mile limit before, we don't have any limit anymore. So that's called Books By Mail and it's an improvement on customer service and inclusivity. Uh, and then on, uh, June twenty first, uh, uh, ten thirty A M, we are kickstarting our mobile services. We are going back to the past because we used to have mobile services back in the nineteen seventies and early eighties. So it's called Anywhere Library and the grand opening will be at Rainier at the City Community, uh, sorry, Senior Community Center at ten thirty A M. We currently have six locations identified of where this, um, vehicle's going to go, uh, in Thurston County. We will be up and running in the other four counties by the first quarter of next year. What we hope to see is that we will have fifteen to thirty two sites per county, um, up and running. And it's a fluid thing, right? Because if it doesn't work, we're going to go find another place where we're going to meet a lot of people who can't, we're not seeing at our libraries, right? A lot of barriers in terms of public transportation, transportation, gas, time, et cetera. So if you times thirty, thirty-two times five, that's a hundred and sixty sites that we will be visiting compared to the twenty nine physical locations we have. So we're very, very excited and June twenty first is the kickoff of that. We have joined the Twenty First Century in terms of electrical vehicle charging stations. We have partnered with Energy Northwest and there's two charging stations at the Salcom Timberland Library that used to be a gas station back in the day. Um, we are looking at a new website, a brand new website and it's, it's pretty expensive because it's the best product for public libraries in North America. The company is called Bibliocommons, we went out for an R F P, very, uh, you know, robust R F P. That this is like the chef's kiss of, uh, the quality of the website. We're super excited and it will be open to everybody October thirtieth. Very, very excited. Um, and then, let's see, all libraries continue as connection sites in the work source system. That means that we help people, job seekers and business owners as well. We have been heavily involved in the broadband action teams for each one of our five counties submitting. We are like, the Department of Commerce has noticed us in terms of, whoa, digital equity, this is the poster child for digital equity. So when you look at that, we put our summary of the digital equity on our website, which if you're interested in, I could share. Because, um, what there, for us, it's like a point in time of what we're doing digital equity wise across seven thousand square miles. And we want to hear from people what they think is the next step because we're doing so much around, um, you know, we give forty four dollars a month of free printing per library card. You know, we give access to, you know, I mean, it just goes on and on and on. So we do a lot around digital equity and everybody in every five, all of five counties, they all have the same access, right? There's not different access per county. Um, I wanted to mention that we also put together, and this is the last thing. I really saw a need, you know, Michael Cage puts on in the other E D Cs, they put on the, the, the Business Expo every, every, uh, late fall or in December. And I always thought that the, and, and you know, the cities and the, and the mayors talk and the county talk in January with the state of the cities and the, and the county. And I thought, you know, there's so much going on behind the scenes now with, um, with, uh, STEM-related family and, uh, family paid jobs. Um, there's just a lot of work going on with Pac Mountain and other entities. And we're still coming out of a pandemic where mental health is still a very big issue. So I, we partnered with the Capital STEM Alliance, which has the same five county footprint we do. And we put on an event on May twenty fifth. Um, and we recorded it, T C T V recorded it and it will be available shortly in segments. And we're focused on mental health and, uh, social emotional health and then opportunities for STEM education K through twelve and family wage careers. All the speakers came from the five county region. And people loved it so much that they want us to, and we were going to do another one anyways because we see the need for it. November second in the evening from five to seven, uh, and then we'll do it twice that you're moving forward because there's so much great work getting done by so many entities that we want the, the person who doesn't know all this yet, you know, to, to, to be really in the know as, as we move forward as a whole group. So I would like to, uh, again, thank you, uh, for so much for your excellent partnership over the years. The Lacy Timberland Library looks fantastic, the new paint, the new layout. And, and I mean, it's just, you know, kudos to, to, to Holly and to the city for, for a great, great partnership. Um, I want to end on a quote and I'm so proud of myself because I haven't had a coughing fit in twenty minutes because I was coughing all day today. Um, as always, I would like to end on a quote that is relevant to the times we are living in. Libraries will get you through times of no money better than money will get you through times of no libraries.
Yeah, there you go. Well, we're, we're absolutely, um, s- super thrilled with all the great partnerships that we have. You know, Lacy loves to read.
Oh, it's awesome.
It's just amazing. I'm so, um, you know, honored to be a part of that every year and, um, and, you know, it's amazing, um, when you have a daughter who loves to read, um, how much you realize there's stuff out there, you know, in, in the library and it's just, uh, it's, it's like one of her favorite things to do is, is access it. And it's just amazing, it's an amazing service and I know it's helped her really become the person she is today and the student she's become, you know, and it's, um, so thank you for my personal note from helping raise my daughter.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Um, it mean, it means a lot. And obviously the, um, ongoing work that we're, we're doing, we're going to have a couple of electrical vehicle charging stations over there too. I'm not sure when that's gonna, I keep on talking about that, you know, and hoping that can get there as soon as possible. We've been talking about that for a while. And so, um, it's a great relationship, um, and, um, we really appreciate everything you do for our community.
I do want to, you're very welcome. I do, we, we work really hard, I can tell you that. We're a small but mighty team. So there's two more points I would like to make. One is the North Thurston School District, all fifteen thousand or so students, K through twelve have an E-number in their Skyware software account to access all of Timberland's online resources. And they've had that now for three or four years.
And they have it as soon as they become a student there and they have it throughout their entire student career.
And we update those records every single night. So if people, if students leave or, or come on, you know, it's, it's updated every single night. So that's a big deal because a lot of the, you know, there's forty four school districts in our region and many of them do not have the online access that we provide. Um, and then in, in one sentence, I describe how it is to live within the one percent. Um, and that is in two thousand and thirteen, when I became Executive Director, we had about three hundred and ten people on staff. Then not full F T E, but three hundred and ten people. We now have two hundred and forty five. So that tells you, you know, how we've had to change the work. To make it look seamless on the outside, but.
A lot on the inside.
And we've been in a soft hiring freeze since January two thousand and nineteen. And our leadership team has been cut in half. That's why we're so wearing multiple hats.
Well, wow, yeah, we understand those budgets and it's interesting, uh, you know, a- as you know, um, we've seen the assessed value go way, way up, but then your.
Levy rate goes way, way down.
You know, we're seeing record low levy rates here in Lacey as well, you know, um, and, you know, the, the other junior taxing districts, they, of course, they go back and, um, look at their levy rate and they, they call it restore it and then, you know, um, but we, we obviously are not in that same situation. So although the library, could the library go out for a restoration?
We could go out for a levy lid lift, uh, but it would have to be in the five counties. It would have to pass by fifty percent plus one.
Yeah.
Um, it would cost, back in two thousand and nine when it failed, it cost about three hundred and something, fifty thousand, sixty thousand. But it was also done in February, it was the only thing on the ballot, um.
Do you have to do all five counties?
Yes, yes, because we're one junior taxing district.
We're all.
Yeah, and we're the largest one and there's two hundred and twenty five other taxing districts. And I like to say that I did do kindergarten twice, I did, because of where I fall in the, in the school year. So I know how to play in the sandbox really well and I don't want to necessarily impact other people's budgets, right? So I would need to hire, there's only one tax attorney out there that I know of, um, who does the fire tax stuff and I told him he can't retire for a few more years because I need him to crunch the numbers of what that would look like if we ever went there.
Yeah.
It's like, you, you need to analyze for me two hundred and twenty five taxing districts and if we went up five tenths, cents, ten cents, twenty.
Because it affects all the other.
Exactly, exactly, yeah.
Well, well, I keep up the good work, you know, the, I, um, I'd love, uh, opening up, uh, Hawks Prairie because it just feels so much like, um, you're walking into like a little coffee shop, you know?
Yeah.
You know, it, that, that small area and you walk in and it's right there in that, in that commercial area and it's just, it's a great, great place. But of course, Lacey is number one. I was going to say Lacey is going to be number one no matter what, but you know, Lacey is just such a jewel.
It is a jewel, it's a jewel in the crown of, of Timberland, I can tell you that.
It's amazing.
And then, if you don't mind, one last thing, because I want you to know about this. Um, we audited our online overdrive collection, we paid for an audit and then we had an audit done for free. And the results came back about two years ago that it's one of the top equity, diversity, inclusive collections in the whole nation. I wanted you to know that. And that, um, in terms of book bans and what's going on around the country right now, we are not part of that at this point. Um, we do have internal protocols that address that. We get, our board and our staff are trained heavily on intellectual freedom. Um, and, uh, we do have a process that people would follow. Um, last year we had eight written forms, concerns, the year before we had four and this year we've had none. So that's a, that's a, that's a good marker. Yeah, so I wanted to share that.
You, you mentioned T C T V, T C Media.
Yeah.
What, what is your relationship with T C Media? How, how much do you guys work together?
No, we don't. This was the first time that we did for this May twenty fifth event.
Is there, is that something that you'd look to do more of in the future or?
Uh, you mean for the, for that kind of an event?
Yeah.
Uh, possibly, but we might end up, it, it's, so the Capital STEM Alliance is the one that recorded the sessions, not Timberland, because we don't have a license for a thousand people.
True.
And Capital STEM Alliance, their backbone is E S D one thirteen. So they had like a thousand registrations that could have, could have registered.
Okay.
And we wanted people to register because we didn't want any Zoom bombing.
Yeah.
And so, um, so she did the first, when Commissioner Mahia spoke, um, Lori, the Capital STEM Alliance, recorded it, T C T V did the rest, but we might end up being able to do that ourselves.
Okay.
Maybe in the future because of this new website we're getting and all the additional software that we're getting with the website, we might be able to do it ourselves. E S D one thirteen might be able to do it. So I don't know, we haven't had those future conversations about T C T V or T C Media for like two thousand and twenty five.
Anything else from the county?
What? I want to re- reiterate what the mayor said about Lacey Loves to Read and really commend Holly for her work on that. It is such a wonderful event.
It is, it's amazing and I love being able to go every year since two thousand and thirteen and I, that's when I see you. And, uh, and then to also, the books get on overdrive, right? Or are they separate or on overdrive?
So the, the, um, the award-winning author or the, the stuff that the kids do?
The award-winning author is al- always featured on overdrive.
Yes, the, um, so we also do as part of Lacey Loves to Read every year, a teen, uh, writing contest of some kind. And the, um, prizes for the winners are inclusion into an eBook. And that is not in overdrive, but it is available for download off of our Lacey website.
Right.
Um, for Timberland and then they also have, uh, we also have physical copies now as part of all our local author collection in Lacey in the library. Um, in conjunction with our new Books by Kids for Kids, which are our little kids who write their own book and then give it to us and we barcode it and put it in the collection and people can check them out.
And it's so sweet.
I bet you they're.
They are so sweet.
Yeah, so we're just really big on the, you mentioned the Lacey Loves to Read. We have the, the winning bookmarks framed up on the wall, that's part of our art that we do, uh, every year. Um, and, and those kind of opportunities just really showcase the different community activities and creativity of our folks is, uh, is a big part of what we do, so.
Love it.
So yesterday a book was returned, two days ago, a book was returned to the Aberdeen Timberland Library from eighty one years ago.
The due date was eighteen forty two?
The due date was nineteen forty two.
What was the name of the book?
Something Bounty.
It was the Bounty, it was the Bounty Trilogy and I don't remember the.
Wow, but somebody wrote in there, there's a bookmark and somebody wrote, this is not a good book or.
Boring, it's so boring, it took eighty years to return.
And so we figured out with two cents a day for overdue fines, it was like four hundred and eighty dollars or something like that. But we don't charge in overdue fines anymore, but.
But you may see it on CNN, apparently it was a slow news day earlier today and, uh, on Cairo Seven last night and CNN possibly.
Yeah, I like that Seinfeld.
Love it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, we'll leave these for you.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
So much.
Thank you.
And thank you for coming and giving a report out.
Awesome. And I don't feel rushed in terms of having it at a city council meeting where I have to say all this in three minutes. Thank you, much appreciated.
Hey, last step on our agenda.
Girl, do you have a card?
Come on in.
Wait, I got it, I got it. Let me lead. Now I'll get you a card.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for allowing me to be here, Mayor Ryder and Deputy Mayor Miller and fellow council members. I'm a little nervous, I don't know why, following up after your presentation, it's like, you're really good.
Yes.
So I'm here to present or at least talk about the upcoming building code updates that were originally scheduled to be implemented July one, which was July second, actually, the first Monday of July this year. But as we may already know, it got pushed back a hundred and twenty days by the State Building Code Council. And so when we're looking at all the different codes that we implement every code cycle, which is every three years, um, we've got the International Building Code, we've got the International Residential Code, the International Fire Code. And I like to call it the accessory codes, the mechanical code, the plumbing code, the fuel gas code and including the infamous Washington State Energy Code. And I know that there's a lot of talking about the upcoming energy code. And, um, so I'm here to discuss anything that the council may have or concerns or questions about it. You may already know it's approved and implemented at the state level. And so we follow those marching orders, I myself and the city.
And so we follow those marching orders, I myself and the city. Um, the council, um, likes to take part in the approval process, but it's approved at the state level. And the reason I say that is that it's hard, you know, when the code comes our way. Um, we are, myself and the team here at Lacey are implementers of the code. Um, we don't craft the code. We don't have input on the code. The State Building Code Council and their committee does, and their associated tag groups. Those are technical advisory groups, the tech groups. So then when we get the code, um, and then when we see it come and we prepare for that, we get training for that. Um, this particular code's got a lot of meat on the bones, and there's a lot to it. As we know, it's been backburnered a hundred and twenty days. Um, I just heard from the, uh, executive manager of the State Building Code Council just this afternoon that they're still taking input proposals until tomorrow, the end of the day. And then they're gonna go into more code development. So the code, the paint technically hasn't dried on the code. Um, but it's basic format is in place.
How much do we, um, or you, you in particular, or your, your department have, um, any weigh-in on the codes when it's out? Do you, do you, um, when it's, when it's, you know, out for review? Are you putting in your R C D input or do, are you, is that a no-no?
It's not a no-no. You have to be either appointed to the committee or, um, by the governor. Um, or you are, um, on a tag group, a technical advisory group. Um, so there's a huge commitment there. Um, it's an important role to play in helping with the code development. So there is a, there's a tag group for each codebook, you know, the McCann code, building code, the fire code and the energy code, all the codes. Um, our team is not involved with it. It would be, um, good if we were. It's just, it's it's huge commitment. But here we are today with the new twenty twenty-one codes that will be implemented sometime. Well, it's supposed to be um, October twenty-ninth, which is actually the month, following Monday, which is the thirtieth of October. Um, but I brought the code with me, not that, um, I would think anybody is really interested in grooming through it. It's a, it's a large document. But I am here to answer questions about it if I can.
And that, and that's those, uh, the council on the stage, I think, correct if I'm wrong, but they try to appoint, uh, representation from all the various stakeholder groups to that or like B I W, master builders organizations, WABO, which is the Washington Association of Building Officials, and that's where that where Wade and his team are members of the WABO group, that's where they have their representation come up through that process.
So I was just having a conversation with our, uh, city manager about what's so frustrating for me about this process is that, um, it's coming for us for review. We'll have to vote on it to have it go into toward the pass, but we actually have no say in it. And so yeah, I know, I know, I know it is. And so I I hope going forward, um, when we, when we, after we pass this one, that we put language in there that allows it to go in, you know, as amended going forward. So this doesn't come I mean, i- it's, it's, it's a waste of time. It's a point pointless waste of time for us to, I mean, we have no say in it. We, we if we all voted it down, it doesn't matter. You still have to follow it.
Yes.
And so, I mean, I'm not sure what we're doing.
It's not really a vote.
It's not a vote. And so, I mean, I I appreciate all the hard work that I mean, I can't imagine what it takes for you guys to see, get, keep up on this, you know, here, you know? I- it just must be a ton of work to go through it and figure out, okay, what, you know, you know,
It's a technical document.
It's a technical, technical document that you have to now follow and that other people have to follow. I mean, it's just so complicated.
I I think that, uh, if I could give you any reassurance, everything that you said makes perfect sense. I think that, um, us as being stewards to our community and to the codes, but mostly to our community, the codes are part of that, is us training to the best of our ability. And then being stewards of those codes and and mentoring and working and walking like we always do, but we'll continue to do side by side with everybody from the homeowner that's doing a little addition or conversion to the big giant structures that we see.
What, what are some of the major changes? Like, can you kind of, with a broad brush stroke, kind of?
So we have the mechanical, oh, excuse me, we have the commercial energy code, we have the residential energy code. Do you want me to touch on either of the two? Do you have a preference?
Yeah, I, I, I know there's some big two.
What, what is gonna be some, something significant?
Yeah.
You said there's a lot of meat on the bone. Why don't you tell us what some of that meat is?
Equipment efficiencies. It's equipment efficiencies that that are, have limited, um, limited production and as far as, you know, being able to get that equipment to do what it's supposed to do. Um, some of it has, is in the process of being developed. Some of it is in limited quantities. It's very specialized equipment.
That's specialized for
maximum efficiency, heating and cooling. Um, it's high-end equipment. Um, the thermal envelopes have changed little in the two buildings and in the commercial and residential. Things like attic insulation's been bumped up in residential from R forty-nine to R sixty. It's simple to blow in, but it's still, we're talking probably sixteen, eighteen inches of depth of insulation attic. Um, wall insulation is now gone from just filling the stud cavity to filling the stud cavity and adding external, um, rigid insulation. It's called C I continuous insulation around the perimeter of the structure. And so, of course, that is, that is black and white in the code. Now that you have to put on a, on a two-by-six wall, an R five insulation on the outside for your, your thermal barrier. And so you have to figure out how to attach your siding. And I was doing a little research today. I was a little concerned about the, the most predominant product that we have out there for exterior siding is Hardy. They do have installation details for that, on how to install that and install your siding properly to make it, you know?
So the markets are catching up with the code.
They are catching up and so, but they are putting their track shoes on and because once we get the codes solidified, then the training happens. So between now and and ten twenty-nine, they're gonna put their, they're gonna go back to the drawing board and 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 tweak and adjust whatever codes that they're being pushed on.
And new starts are gonna go up in value significantly.
So, so Wade, a comment and a question, actually. So, comment side first. Thank you for all the work you do. I mean, I, we hear, I can tell you that we hear from the building community, the development community about how much better it is to work in Lacey than any other area in the surrounding communities. And it's because of you and your team that make it so much better to work with. So thank you for all that. Really appreciate it.
Eh, every day we have to do that though and suit up. It's important.
And you guys do a great job. My question, I guess, is so these changes, I'm, I'm assuming this is gonna drive the cost of build, of construction up significantly, it sounds like? So we, we have an affordable housing crisis in the state. And the state passes a building code that's gonna cause the cost of building to go up. Makes a lot of sense.
Definitely not cheaper. I, I don't know any of those numbers. It's, I, I would be fooling everybody if I said anything other than it's definitely not less.
So when you, um, with the passage of the codes and were, were there any financial models built that would demonstrate, you know, say, uh, the, the, the cost of constructing a two thousand square foot residential property or the cost of constructing a thirty thousand uh, square foot commercial property? Were any, were any models built to, to, to illustrate?
We don't have that information yet. I think part of the reason, I think you will probably see it after the codes are implemented that you'll see people doing that. You'll see research firms doing that. Once the codes have been solidified, right now they're going back to the drawing board and, um, putting it back on the workbench and working on it. The heat pump requirements for heat pumps, uh, for, for single-family dwelling units, um, is not mandated for, um, hot water heaters and or just for your H V A C system. That was initially thought that that was gonna be mandated black and white. You had to put in, uh, uh, a water heater that was, had the heat pump component to it and mandate that your furnace had to have a heat pump. That's now optional. That's part of your performance, getting energy credits. Um, the energy credits have gone down one-half credit from six to five point five, or, yeah, six to five point five. And then also on the E D U's half credit lower, which is nice.
We talked about that with the E D U's, huh?
When we're talking big picture, oh, what you said, council member Kunkel, you're absolutely right. I mean, I'm, we implement the code. We oversee and make sure that the minimum requirements are being met. I came from construction. I've been in this here for over thirty years. We see it, we know it, we understand the struggles. You know, we see it in the homeowners trying to do a project. They can't do it because maybe the costs are out of their reach. Um, but we do everything we can to help them. Get their leg over the fence.
We definitely appreciate that, appreciate that.
Uh, if I could a- address actually Mayor Ryder's, uh, observation earlier, you're ahead of us a little bit. One of the, um, things we wanted to talk about tonight was, uh, whether we should go to adopt by reference model in the code, so we don't have to come back to council for a affirmative approval every three years.
Yes.
Uh, which, which doesn't mean that we wouldn't be here and Wade would, well, not Wade next time, unfortunately. Um, but, uh, we'd be there briefing you on the, on the, uh, changes and the updates, but not coming for a mother may I for something that we have to do anyway.
That would be very much appreciated, I can, at least from my perspective, because it's a vote that when we get, it comes in front of us, I won't vote on it. I mean, I will abstain. To vote on something that we actually don't have a say in.
Yep.
Basically, and that's, that's how they do voting in communist countries, not in America.
It's a very uncomfortable position to be in.
Council members, plus it's just also an efficiency. We could still do the briefing, the overview, what's going on. But now I have to take that extra step for everything, so.
That was on my list. You're very clairvoyant. You were ahead of it. Um, the, like I said, thermal envelope requirements are fairly minimal. The, I'm not making light of the exterior rigid insulation on the outside of the wall. Those framing techniques have been around for a very, very long time. Uh, industry standard-wise, the typical construction does not include that. So it's gonna make force the industry to, um, build in that manner.
But I guess to, to wrap up a little bit and and get back to, you know, Wade and his team, we're really actually very happy that the, the state deferred the implementation. Because, uh, it was coming up on the point where there was no training available. So because it was so late, the energy code in particular, so late in being finalized. So we're actually really happy with the, the, uh, delay so that we can be ready to hit the ground running and Wade will make certain that happens with his, with his team. Um, but also, you know, there was a big push and still is or was uh, for construction to get in before the energy code changed. So it's gonna give the industry a little bit of time to make that transition as well. So we're not as, uh, pounded by, uh, people trying to, trying to beat, uh, fairly arbitrary code date, uh, implementation, so.
Councilmember Stedman, do you have a question?
Uh, I just wanted to reiterate what, uh, Lenny said. From somebody that's built actually a couple of commercial buildings has a parcel large enough to build four more. Um, Wade and his team in the, um, development, um, department there in City Lacey are just wonderful. Um, I did want to say that Wade is the only person on a camera that it doesn't add ten pounds to.
Thank you.
But, uh, yeah, he, he's just amazing. They do great work. Um, I look forward to working with them again and, um, you know, I can't say, uh, en- enough great things about them. So, you know, I, I wear a lot of hats and I do uh, work with all the mi- local municipalities and even out of state, um, Florida and Arizona and stuff, and it's nowhere even close. But my, I do have a question. Is I love form-based code and and the innovative thinking that City Lacey does. Good job, Rick Walk. I know you if, you know, you were spearhead behind that form-based code. I would like to see it expanded. I mean, the building community, whether it's residential or commercial, um, you know exactly, uh, you know, you can, you, you can get answers without even going to the front desk of what you want to do, how much it'll probably cost, how long it'll take, et cetera, et cetera. And it's just awesome. I'd love to see expanded. Can you, do you have any plans to do that?
May I take that one, Rex?
Well, it's, you know, that, that right now it specifically applies to the Midtown as a land use framework for, uh, uh, values approvals in design. In order for us to expand it to other locations, we'll have to do a sub-area study to, based off of what combination of the built environment and the vision for that area. So it's something we could look at doing, but it would be a, uh, uh, an effort specific to that particular location that we want as a form-based code too. It also can come out of in terms of, uh, master planning. You'll have area around, um, um, Davellis. That could be a place that can be developed into the master plan and those techniques. And those are things we'd work with the property owners, case of driving, when they're ready to go forward with that.
Um, the, the, one last thing about all this is obviously the, the, the one sort of big controversial um, thing in the codes is the natural gas side of things. Where, wh- what's the latest on?
It's not been banned. That will not be banned this code cycle. Gas-fired equipment, you, you, you're not gonna be, you're gonna get a little extra burden on meeting your energy credits. But it's not banned.
Okay.
It's one extra energy credit. If you talk about the minimum number required for your project, you're gonna have one extra credit. But it's not banned.
Okay.
Which grateful for.
Yeah, especially for restaurants is obviously, it's a big difficult, difficulty for them.
And there's a, there's another piece that's also caused the delay in implementation because they're getting more feedback because there are some language related to what was done in California and the City of Berkeley. And there's currently a, uh, lawsuit from the California Restaurants Association versus the City of Berkeley that actually the decision just came out from the ninth Circuit Court of Appeals that said, um, that uh, the City of Berkeley, uh, went too far because, uh, look at what they did pre or, uh, was not in alignment with the, uh, Energy Policy and Conservation Act adopted by Congress that prevents local state requirements to potentially eliminate gas appliances. You just, you know, and that would include the, they view that as including the infrastructure and in Berkeley, they, uh, were able to be a gas piping to be extended for new construction. So that's being sorted out in the ninth quarter. That's been the decision. So now everybody's looking back and revamping, how do you make the codes in alignment with that decision?
From having owned a restaurant and been in that business, I don't know how you do a restaurant without gas. I mean, it just, it's it's, it's a necessary thing in a restaurant. It's not a, it's not a nice to have. It's a must-have in a restaurant. It really is.
And it did, this court just kind of identify that there's this, uh, this, the, uh, Energy Policy and Conservation Act that actually addresses, you know, uh, pre- pre-ems banning of, of gas appliances. So that's something that would have to resolve at a, at a national level or through the courts.
So, appreciate the, uh, the presentation. This will come before council for one last approval and I think is so the council, you know, like I knew that, uh, we write some language in there that, um, this will be the last time it comes to for the council.
Well, you're gonna, we're gonna be briefed on
Sure.
changes to code as, as it comes and goes. We, yeah, it, it's redundant for us to have to vote on something that we have no control over, so.
At the cost of not being very agreeable, it's worth saying that we don't have zero discretion when this comes before us because what we can do is we could actually implement higher performance standards than what the state sets. The state creates the floor. So we can't create something that's below what the state says, but we could levy higher performance standards.
Except the residential. There's law that we can't judge the residential. Yes, we could.
I don't suggest that we do that. I'm not a building code expert, and I know we have affordable housing issues already. But we also have climate challenges that are becoming more present every day. So I'm, I'm supportive of us not continuing to approve it as a sort of pro forma. I'd still like to be briefed, but it isn't quite accurate that we have zero choice in what these codes read like.
That's, yeah.
And then there's, through that briefing update, there, if there's council or future councils want to do different things, we could also bring those specific amendments. There's the other thing too, just want to be clear as well, there's appendixes to the codes, there's the form code, then there's the appendixes that are, uh, created that can be optional. And we have adopted those optional codes that they get changed in the future. We may want to reconsider or there may be optional codes that are created that may be in alignment with the council and the City of Lacey. So those, those things would come in as specific amendments, not the overall.
Discussion about.
You know, one of the things that we talked about is making sure that, um, new, um, the the electric vehicle charging infrastructure is there for multi-family. It's also there for new single-family and so on and so forth. This, is that within the codes right now?
Correct. It is in the codes.
So that's covered two ways through the, uh, the international codes with laying out the conduit and setting up the infrastructure. And then you also have our, uh, local parking ordinances that have a specification for certain types of uses to provide, uh, charging stations. As far as the parking, very much.
Anything else, Chris? Okay.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Council.
You know the support. Everybody, absolutely, I'm gonna retire in December.
Based on what?
Oh, yeah.
So December, you're outta here, huh?
Yeah, yeah, it's pretty exciting, but it's also, you know, melancholy, I miss everything, everybody.
His, his legacy with the team that he's built, uh, will stay with the city for a long time, however.
Yeah, got a good young core.
Yep.
Doing really good stuff.
Yep.
I, I will say this Wade, that our friendship will last long past, uh, or long way further, way, way far into your retirement years.
Well, I appreciate, you're gonna have to go out to Shelton and find me, but I appreciate it.
Well, with that, we've, uh, reached the end of our agenda, um, thank you Wade. The objection, I will call this meeting in turn, keep passing Lacey.